Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioner's General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, everyone. You'll please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our prayer this morning is from Isaiah 40:10. "The mountains and the hills may crumble, but my love for you will never end. I will keep forever my promise of peace, so says the Lord who loves you." I understand Lori has the dog this morning?
I do. We have a special treat for you today. We have a little beagle. She's a female, about four years old. She has a great personality. She's a little nervous, but very sweet, sweet dog. She will be available on Saturday, so if you would like to come down to the kennel and pick her up or check us out on Facebook, we have a lot of dogs available. How many? Twenty-two dogs, so lots to pick from. So sixty dollars and sixty-six dollars brings you a nice dog from our kennel to take to your family. So come and check us out.
We have a presentation today from Children's Services. If you'd like to do that now or we can do a Word Agenda.
Sure, we could do it now. I see that both Scott Ferris, the Executive Director, and Bill Harper, the Chair, are both here from Children's Services with a Board update. Welcome, gentlemen.
And ladies.
And ladies.
Well, good morning, everyone. Thanks for inviting us here. First of all, I would like to, I want to share a little bit about the work that we've been doing as members of the Board of Lorraine County Children's Services. And first of all, I just want to thank you for appointing us to that Board, giving us that opportunity to make a difference in Lorraine County. It's a great honor. Tracy Green, who was just recently appointed to take Marcia Ballinger's place, Melissa Stefano, Linda Weber, and Frank Whitfield and myself have been working together really well as a team. And it's great to have good people to work with and people who are committed to it. It's rare that any of our Board members misses a meeting, so, and we meet every month, as you know. I also want to recognize all the people who have served on Children's Services Board in the past. The changes that we're making are not due to, you know, anything that they didn't, they did wrong or that they didn't see, but, you know, when you're given a responsibility, you want to do the best you can. And so we've been, we've been hopefully making some improvements. I want to share this diagram with you because I think this is one of the important distinctions that we've made on the Board as we've been putting our governance structure together. You can see at the top, we have the owners who we see as residents, the citizens of Lorraine County. They're the people that we're beholden to. And in between there are the Board of Commissioners because we see the Board of Commissioners as that intermediary, that representative of those moral owners of us as well. So we work on your behalf and, of course, you work on behalf of those folks as well together. We then delegate responsibility directly through our Executive Director, Scott Ferris. That's our link to the staff and that's our sole link to the staff. And of course, then they serve the clients that come to see us. This has been written in our policies specifically, and I just want to read to you what we consider to be our governance commitment as a Board. The purpose of the Board on behalf of the citizens of Lorraine County and their duly-elected officials, the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners, is to see to it that Lorraine County Children's Services achieves appropriate results for appropriate persons at an appropriate cost and avoids unacceptable actions and situations. So we're all about getting the right outcomes for the right people and recognizing that cost is a factor, but we need to do, so we need to do our work efficiently and effectively. So if we go to the next slide, I just want to share with you some of the principles that underline our approach to governance. And I did bring our policy manual with me today to just share with you. This is something that we've created over the last eighteen months to guide our work, to have in writing specifically how we're going to govern this entity because the governance of it falls to us on your behalf and on behalf of the citizens. The operations falls to, of course, to Scott and his staff. So we see that we are simply trustees. We are holding this thing in trust for the community. As a group, it's a team sport, so it's not any one of us individuals, it's us working together as a team. Our decisions are policy decisions and we are as specific as we need to be in order to communicate directly to Scott what our intention is. Once we stop writing in those policies, then we're willing to accept any reasonable interpretation of what we've written. So it's a very precise approach to governance. It's one in which we want to give clear and clean delegation to him, just like any employee would want, right? They want to know what's their job, what's the expectations, and we've been very clear about that. Our primary duty is to get outcomes for these children, for these families that come seeking help. So we've defined specifically that our outcome that we want is for resident children in Lorraine County who face neglect, abuse, and dependence will have a physically and mentally safe and healthy living environment that assists them to grow to their full potential at a level similar to comparable children's services agencies serving similar populations. So we want to compare ourselves to the best out there. So we have that policy as well. We explain in our policy to Scott what we won't put up with, what is not acceptable, and we document that specifically. And so every month when we meet, Scott provides us with monitoring reports of how we're doing. He collects the data based on what his interpretation is of our policy, and then we decide, is that acceptable or not. So this is very rigorous review, rigorous monitoring that our Board is engaged in, whether it's the fiscal operation, the clinical operation, or the business operation of the agency. So our monitoring is rigorous and disciplined, and I'm excited to be a part of this group at this point. And hopefully, with all of your help, we've restored some of the community support and recognition of the important role that this agency has played. So I'd be glad to respond to any questions, or we can just go to Scott's report on our operation.
Your Board's done a very good job just commenting, consolidating, and everybody participating has really made a difference, I think, in what the overall views are in the public. Because in past issues, I was mouthing about a lot, the issues that were brought up, and I'm just really happy the way you guys have steered the ship.
Thank you, thank you. Well, appreciate the opportunity.
Would you, Bill, I'm sorry, would you, as a Board member, I guess, care to share any thoughts? I know unfortunately, our county, like so many other counties, are trying to help people dealing with addiction issues, and that leads to difficulties, you know, with the children and when to place the child back in the home. And I'm just curious as to how the Board has been processing that and working with Scott, because I think for a lot of folks who are, you know, battling addiction, trying to turn their lives around, that, you know, a big motivation for them is to, you know, have their family back together again. And just wondering how the Board is addressing that.
Well, it certainly is a major issue for families in Lorraine County and especially for children that find themselves in that unfortunate circumstance. Certainly, the epidemic that we have with heroin and other similar drugs has got a lot of attention, and rightfully so, because you're really talking about life or death situations. But the fact of the matter is that alcohol and other substance use have been problems for us for decades. And, you know, one of our struggles is the same struggle that you all feel, which is that we have not gotten for a long time the support from state government that we think and the attention, the priority that should be placed on these vital services. And so, you know, Ohio does not, is very far behind in terms of funding of child protective services, I'm sorry to say. And I also would say that that's the case with the treatment of addictions. There's some attention paid to it, but the bottom line is the infrastructure that supports those services has been whittled away at for a long time. And the best that we can do is with the resources, including the tax levy that voters have supported here, we do the best we can. And we're very proud of the work that our staff does. We still hold ourselves up as one of the best, if not the best, children's services operation in the state. But that's all due to the good graces of our local taxpayers and the willingness to open up their pocketbooks to support it. So it certainly is an issue for us, but I think it is just part of a larger picture that we have to look at.
Thank you.
I kind of got my soapbox here.
No, it's okay.
Couldn't help myself.
No, it's okay.
All right. I'll turn it over to Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to, on the topic of the heroin and opiate addiction, and as we're seeing, you know, an increase in the number of children that are court ordered into our custody for parents that are dealing with this, this increase is going on statewide. And definitely, treatment of this kind of substance abuse is more severe and prolonged. Relapse is a part of recovery, but these parents in the relapse, it's a harder relapse. So these children of these parents tend to stay and care longer. So it's a new dynamic, and I know we're doing our best to work with that. The Juvenile Court has a drug treatment court specific for parents suffering with this, and we've dedicated a full-time worker to the court. Prior to that, over the years, with the cuts we've had, you know, it's just been when one caseworker had a case that was going to court, we felt that was the expertise needed and we needed to dedicate it. Had one person dedicated to working with these clients, and it's a lot of hands-on work. And the court is partnering with us, and we're expecting, you know, good outcomes for families, for parents that are in the drug treatment court.
Yeah, I just, you know, it's something that I think is always troublesome when, you know, families are divided and children are away from their parents. And it's just when you look at people who are in recovery, I think a big motivating factor for them to improve their lives and turn their lives around and get away from their addiction is to have their children in their lives. And, you know, I know that's a sensitive area because you never want to have a child in a dangerous or harmful situation, but at the same time, I hope that we're being reasonable when it comes time to say that, you know, John or Barb has been very dedicated in their program and they've made amazing progress and that, you know, that we're looking at it from the standpoint of this is that additional motivation to keep them on track of being reunited with family and their children.
A reunification is the goal, a safe reunification is the goal. We work with the court and our partner agencies, so when a child is reunified, that it's planful, that there's controls in place, and the parent knows what to do if they start sliding, so that a child won't be re-harmed in any way. I'd like to take a few moments of your time, give an update on 2015 for the agency. So we have a quick PowerPoint. That's a touchy mess. Even though we don't have our final data for our annual report, we do want to emphasize with you, and I first want to thank again for the community support and your support for allowing us to have the levy that was on the ballot last year that we began a new collection this year. You know, without this support and without the support of the community, we wouldn't be able to, you know, have the outcomes we have with families and children that we do have. You know, it's been a tremendous amount of support. Last year, the agency received nearly 5,000 referrals concerning the maltreatment or alleged maltreatment of children. That's up approximately 700 from last year. Not every referral is a report. There are state screening guidelines that we have to use to determine when we do screen in as a report and dispatch a social worker to work with that family. We're very aware of the seriousness of what we do and when, I mean, we are government and when, you know, the decision has to be based on, you know, criteria for when we do intervene in a family's life. But our community does a very good job, I think, of reporting when they have concerns and not over-reporting or misreporting. And we've worked with our stakeholders and our mandated reporters where when they do have credible concerns, they definitely call us. So approximately 51% of the referrals we receive are screened in as reports. And if you remember, about eighteen months ago, we started Alternative Response. Prior to that, every report that we screened in and went out on was treated in a traditional role, which is more investigatory. You had labels of alleged child victims, you had alleged perpetrator. Alternative Response allows us to work with a family in a more strength-based approach for those lesser-risk type referrals, so there isn't the labeling of alleged child victim, alleged perpetrator. It's just a family in need of service, a family that's overwhelmed. I think you would agree. There's a big difference in a physical abuse case where you might have a mom's abusive boyfriend, you know, seriously hurting a child versus maybe to a young mom or a young couple who are just overwhelmed, or one parent's out of work, they have trouble paying the bills, maybe some supervision issue of young kids. So those two very different type of referrals. We're allowed to work with Alternative Response in that more strength-based approach. And we are up now to over 50% of the reports we screen in are treated as Alternative Response. We see greater client satisfaction, we see like greater worker satisfaction with this kind of work. And states that have been implementing this, have implemented this for several years, have shown reduced recidivism of kind of those type of reports over years, that families get the skills they need to prevent having another report made on them. So we're looking forward to continuing to implement Alternative Response. Last year, we went through the rigorous process every five years of achieving re-accreditation, the Council on Accreditation. It's something that the agency has done since it was first accredited in 1999. It requires huge involvement, engagement of staff, and kind of commitment to best practice. So we went through and achieved, you know, flying colors. We weren't required to be accredited. Again, it's very rigorous in 22 counties, children's services agencies that are accredited, and I think this helps with our credibility and helps us strive towards best practice in every situation. Also, last year, we were recognized by the American Public Human Services Association for our transition to a primary worker model. We had a five-year review and evaluation that showed we continue to receive high outcomes of the families and children we serve, and in some instances, we even continue to improve on those outcomes. The primary worker has, from the initial point in the case is screened in and assigned to a worker, they will keep that case for the life of whatever. It could be 30 days and the case turned out to be unsubstantiated and we close it. It could be two, three years where the child, we try to work with the family, the child came into custody, the child was finally adopted or reunified back home. One worker keeps that case. That requires a higher mastery of skills and, because there's a lot of world, a lot of rules in both worlds of investigation and assessment and ongoing services. And we have a cooperative team that supports that primary worker as they work with that case from beginning to whatever that end is. So we did a five-year review, and one of the things we showed by removing that automatic case transfer from intake worker to ongoing worker, families spend approximately three months less open with us, because we've taken out that automatic, they start building a relationship with the worker, and then there's that assignment to new worker. We've taken that out, they continue to work to build a relationship with that worker, and so that is, we have seen a reduction in the amount of time families are with us. I think it's kind of like when school ends in June, kids come back in August, September, and you spend the next two, three months just bringing them back up to where they were in June. We've eliminated that, and that has really helped our families achieve their outcomes in a quicker amount of time. Because families don't want us, they want us out of their lives, and we're able to achieve safety and permanency, we want to be able then to assign that worker to a new case, you know. It's using resources the best way that we can. And we are excited that one of our local foster fathers who adopted four children was recognized by our state association as a Foster Family of the Year at our annual conference last year. So that is really exciting, and he has a great story, and we really appreciate what he does and what all our foster families do and all our adoptive families do. So we want to kind of highlight that as well. And then just looking, one highlight for 2016, we're going to be training our staff starting next month and then hopefully engaging the community on what's called Unsafety Together. It's a new model for dealing with cases of domestic violence when there's children involved. It's going to require, similar to Alternative Response, a lot of education, engaging with the community, getting our stakeholders and partners on board, because it focuses on, just because the abuser is out of the home, the abuser, he or she, still can exert a lot of control over what goes on in the home. And we need to be aware of that, not blame the victims for what they're doing, and come up with new kind of ways of case management and case planning to assure safety for the children. So Unsafety Together has been implemented about half the county so far in Ohio. It's evidence-based approach. It's been used in a couple other states, including Florida, where they've had, you know, good outcomes. So we're partnering with the Juvenile Court, Supreme Court, and hopefully, the rest of our domestic violence advocates in the community over the next year as we train our staff, do some community education and training, and go forward with implementing. So in a quick nutshell, that's 2015, and then our look ahead for this year.
Great, wonderful. Some good work.
Yeah, thank you very much for the update. I was just going to ask, I mean, often we read, I was just wondering if we're seeing the same trends. It seems like unfortunately, when there's abuse in a household, that it seems to be the non-parent, it seems to be the single parent's boyfriend or girlfriend involved. Does that seem to be the trend?
In cases of more serious physical abuse, it's usually an unrelated male adult boyfriend that are out of the home. We're seeing a lot of that, and I think Ohio sees a lot of that. So we have the program about choose your parent, choose your partner carefully before you invite somebody into your home, you know, make sure you know their his or her background, how they talk about, you know, former girlfriends or, you know, or the parents of their children, you know, how do they treat other women in their lives, you know. It's okay to do and show them how to do a free public records background check to know their history and their propensity to violence and all that. So we work, you know, we try and work with parents on. I know sometimes young parents feel that they can, oh, I can change him or her, I can make a difference.
Right.
And you can't. And so we spread the message that, you know, he or she may love you, they might not love your children. You know, your children, your parent first, primary, and you need to protect your children.
I know it's a sensitive issue, but I think reports seem to show it happens all too often.
And definitely domestic violence cases, I think we've done a good job of getting the abuser out of the home, the whole system, but yet, you know, if he's the only paycheck coming into the home, he controls, okay, I'm not going to pay the utilities bill, or I have the car, I'm not going to help. You know, we put more burden on the parent that's in the home, getting children to doctors, the schools, groceries, paying bills, and then that situation, we shouldn't be surprised when they invite the abuser back in the home, because they're trying to get basic needs met. And it's a whole systems approach of how can we remove the physical threat yet still not cause more trauma and stress in the home. So it's a good approach, and we're excited about partnering with our community to help turn that around.
Yeah, it's sad. The children suffer because the adults can't act appropriately.
Right.
So, and yeah, be very careful as a single parent as to who you invite into your household.
Well, definitely, and who you let babies with, too.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Under Resolutions Number One, Investments?
So move.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla? Aye. Miskowski? Aye. Preparations?
So move.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla? Aye. Miskowski? Aye.
Now, I was going to point out that before I even get the "so move" out, he's seconding all the time.
You've got to hurry up.
Yeah, okay.
Advances and repayments?
It's okay, thanks. So move.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla? Aye. Miskowski? Aye. Requisitions?
So move.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla? Aye. Miskowski? Aye. Bills?
So move.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla? Aye. Miskowski? Aye. Authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdictional Lorraine County Commissioners?
Mr. Cordez.
Thank you, Commissioner. You actually don't have any hires I want to talk about this morning, but I do desire to speak with the Board with regard to our waiver negotiations, potential sale and purchase of real estate, and litigation. All three topics are allowed under the Sunshine Act for executive session discussions, so I'd ask at the conclusion of our regular Board meetings, hey, we go into executive session, we can talk about those three issues. Thank you.
Approving the reading in the minutes of January 26 and 27, seven?
So move.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla? Aye. Miskowski? Aye. Authorized payment of $918.75 to Andrus Crematorium Funeral Home, Lorraine, for in-urgent veteran Cliff John Elphstorm, Illyria, in accordance with the ORC 5901.25.
So move.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla? Aye. Miskowski? Aye. Under Children and Families, approved an interim service contract with Cleveland Hearing and Speech Center for Help-Negro Program, where sign language interpretation grant for FY16 in amount of 500, effective retroact of July 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2016.
So move.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla? Aye. Miskowski? Aye. Under EMA Homeland Security, interim contract with RS Associates LLC, Norok, in amount of $10,000 for professional consulting advice with regard to completion of a special project funded through technical assistance grant from the United States Department of Transportation, specifically the pipeline and hazardous materials safety administration, and work is completed by September 30th, 2016.
So move.
Discussion.
Yeah, just like to commend our Administrator Jim Cordez and Tom Kelly with emergency management, because I know this was something that we found out about this grant opportunity pretty late in the process, we were up against a very quick deadline, and to say the least.
We didn't think we were going to get it. It was, you know, how many times we spent hours and days and weeks on, we got nowhere, and this one, we did pretty quickly and they gave us some funding. So it's going to be nice with the pipelines coming through here that we reassess what we're doing and appreciate the support, Commissioner Lundey. It's, hopefully, that'll reassure some folks, and, you know, tonight, they're having the Nexus meeting here that we're hosting.
Yeah, and when I was at the Township Association meeting, I know they were very glad to hear that we had, you know, received this grant so that we could do some planning and preparation, because obviously, there's some hazards involved with pipelines. So again, thank you to County Administrator and Tom Kelly for their work in getting this done, because it had to be done quickly, and we were successful in getting the grant.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla? Aye. Miskowski? Aye. Under Transit, authorized filing of the application with ODOT for fiscal year 16, bus and bus facilities program in accordance with the Ohio Revusco 5339.
Yeah, so move.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla? Aye. Miskowski? Aye. Mr. Cordez?
We had a bit of a presentation this morning. I don't think I have anything I'll yield to counsel.
Mr. Ennis?
I do have actually several matters of pending and imminent court action to discuss in executive session.
Commissioners' Report.
Well, I've been spending a lot of time out at Lorraine County Community College this last week or so. Thursday, the Chamber of Commerce had their annual meeting. Tony Gallo did a great job of talking about his organization and what they did in 2015. And then yesterday, Team Lorraine County had their Groundhog Breakfast, and you had mentioned they had the futuristic guy talking about what's going to happen in the future, and kind of overwhelming, but exciting at the same time, so.
Did you like the future shoes?
Not really.
No, you didn't like the future shoes?
No, it was kind of crazy, but yeah.
3D heels.
Right, right. And then, well, and then tonight, the Transit, talking about transportation over at the college again, so I'm going to try to make it to that also, so busy week.
Yeah, Chamber, Tony Gallo did a very good job at the annual meeting. Congratulations to Ole, who just finished up his term as Chairman of the Board, and good luck to Skimmin from Emergency Incorporated, LorraineCounty.com, who's the new Chairman of the Board of the Chamber of Commerce. The WAC Policy Committee met this past Friday, just going over the year ahead, how we're going to continue our policy modeling, the projects we're working on. Also in regards, we got our meeting scheduled for Transportation for America. We're one of seven or eight MPOs from across the country who are going to work together on putting together metrics for looking at our transportation issues. on putting together metrics for looking at our transportation issues and comparison, how different states do it, along with the funding issue, you know, working through Congress. Have to be in Indianapolis, May, I think it's 18th, and, well, 18th, I might have to leave on that Wednesday, ready for our Commissioner meeting, the 19th and 20th, and then we do an entire meeting again in Boston in October. So, it's going to be nice to get our people across the country to talk about how we handle our transportation needs. Congratulations once again to the Kudrowski family, the Punski ball, as always. Can't believe 19 years of celebrating a donut.
Wow.
It's the greatest marketing ploy around here. I said they're iconic, sort of like Ford's brand and Coca-Cola, I guess, but did a great job. Congratulations to them, as always, for a great event. Again, Team Lorraine County Groundhog Day, the economic forecast coming up. Congratulations to Don Calvert and the staff on putting it together, and Thomas Frye, who's Google Senior Futurist and head of the DaVinci Institute. I loved his Back to the Future stuff he did, showing what they showed back, Michael Fox in the movie, and then all the things that have come true since then, so, but it was nice to see things. I actually spoke to him after the event about, what do you figure for a governing model, you know, model? And he says, well, it's going to have to be, you know, international, especially in regards to all the technology and sharing of information. Governments can't have individual privacy laws, it's going to have to be somehow overseeing on a global perspective. And he said he sees some of that changing from being a governance responsibility being an oversight where everybody would have representatives doing it. And again, probably be a big committee, I would guess, but, yeah, very busy week. And then tonight, move at the college in regards to the Transit, so.
And then probably in the future, we'll all be voting from home. I know we used to talk about that in the legislature, wondering if everybody'd be able to stay back in their district and, you know, go into their office at home, vote from there, and with the way things are evolving. I know I have those conversations with my father every once in a while. He's become quite the techie. He just loves the technology stuff and just all the things he's seen in his lifetime. It's just, it's amazing, so. Had the opportunity to attend Issue Six, their fundraiser for the city of Elyria. They had it branded as British Invasion. They had the four lads singing their lots of Beatles songs, and even some really good fish and chips, and so, the room was packed. It was sellout. In fact, you couldn't even buy any tickets at the door, so wishing them well on that initiative. You know, as our communities continue to go through all these cuts and no support from Columbus, everybody's kind of having to make it on their own, so they're really pushing Issue Six quite hard. The Groundhog Day with Team Lorraine County, as my colleagues pointed out, with the Futurist. It's always kind of cool trying to look into the future, and as he pointed out about a crystal ball that he was trying to transport from his home to his office, and he forgot that day, there was a lot of sunshine. I guess the sunshine caused the crystal ball to heat up some things on the front seat, almost caught the car on fire, so he thought that would make an interesting headline for a Futurist to be killed by a crystal ball, his own crystal ball.
Yeah, and he didn't see it coming.
He didn't see it coming, exactly. That was the punchline, so, but it was a great presentation, and, you know, also, we had the recent luncheon with the Chamber of Commerce, Lorraine County Chamber of Commerce, and too often in this county, we hear people say, well, we're not doing anything about jobs, we're not focused on jobs, we're not working on jobs. A lot of people in both of those rooms who were networking amongst themselves and working in conjunction with LCC, working in conjunction with the county, and so, lots of things are being done that maybe the public doesn't see day in and day out, that is focused on jobs and improving jobs in this county. Also enjoyed attending the Nowaka External Affairs Committee meeting in Cleveland on Friday. Good to see that Nowaka is going to be focusing on some rural initiatives as well, too, and also glad to see that Grace Calucci is going to be attending the upcoming Township Association meeting. And I know at the time that this is viewed on TV, the meeting will have already taken place, but I just can't say enough good words about, you know, Bill Harper is here today making a presentation. He's been very instrumental, along with Brian Frederick and Sharon Pearson, the Legal Win Voters, the Urban League, the list goes on and on of the communities that's been working on the transit issue, being held at the Community College on the day of this taping on Wednesday from 6:00 until 8:00 o'clock. So, for those who may miss it and they see this taping, I'm sure you can follow some of the newspaper coverage on that, and the group is in the process of putting together a website as well, too, that will be updating people. And soon in the future, we expect to be hearing back from the group on their thoughts and whether they feel that the Commissioners should go forward and put the question before the voters. That completes my report.
Our Board of Correspondents.
I move that we waive the reading of the Correspondents unless you'd like to read it today. No?
Second.
I already have a second, thank you. And there's no discussion on it.
There's no discussion, okay.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Public comment?
This would be the time. Maybe it'd be so nice to just state your whole name and address for the record. We know who you are, but.
Larry Jones, 124 Brandemere Court in Elyria, Ohio.
Welcome, Mr. Jones.
Thank you. This is what happens when you play football 10 years.
Oh, my. Johnny Manziel may not have to worry about that, so.
No comment. I wanted to come before you, Matt, Ted, and Laurie, this morning to, first of all, because it's Black History Month, and, you know, it's always good to celebrate that, but also, at the same time, to present a program that I think can benefit ex-offenders who are seeking employment in Lorraine County. In 1976, while employed at Lincoln University in Jefferson City, Missouri, US Steel Corporation flew me to its headquarters in New York, I mean, in Pittsburgh, to interview to become its first African-American outside sales representative. Of course, I accepted the job, and they gave me the option of where I wanted to do my training. I decided on Lorraine Works at the time because, two reasons. It was, one, the most profitable profit center in US Steel. Secondly, it was 12,000 people employed at US Steel, Lorraine Works, at that time. After accepting the position, I was given the opportunity to decide the training that I would go through, and my mentor at the time was the Superintendent of the Plant, Don Pass. Some of you remember Don. And my first assignment by US Steel was to represent the corporation as a lone executive to United Way. My responsibility was to make presentations to the major business in Lorraine County to raise funds for the United Way. This is how I met and became good friends of Eric Nord and Scribner Farver. In 1979, Eric Nord, Dorothy Anderson, and I established the Urban League affiliate here in Lorraine County. In 1983, Eric Nord, Evan Nord, and Attorney William Ginn invested $15,000 each for me to start Erie Shore's Computer. That's history, because Erie Shore's was the first African-American-owned mainstream firm in the history of Lorraine County. These two powerful Republicans saw that the importance of developing African-American and Hispanic businesses in the county. To date, we still have one, what I would consider one black-owned mainstream business in Lorraine County. During my 20 years in business, I experienced the highs and the lows of business ownership, but I made it a point to have diversity in my employees. As President and owner of Erie Shore's Computer, I sought out ex-offenders who wanted a second chance to get a job and support their families. It's really, I guess, almost impossible, not just in Lorraine County, but throughout the United States, for an ex-offender to get employment. I know there's a lot of lip service given to it, but when you have the unemployment rate that you have, then think about where that put the ex-offender as far as being able to seek employment and get employment. First of all, I hope, and I think that the business community here in Lorraine County somehow is still interested in black and Hispanic-owned businesses. I hope before I leave that, you know, we're in a position where we see maybe two or three additional black Hispanic-owned mainstream businesses in Lorraine County. I'm here also to give voice to those ex-offenders who do not have a voice, and also to present to you a program that I think is critical. I have not heard this program mentioned in Lorraine County as far as the Workforce Institute or anywhere else, so that's really why I'm coming to you today to talk about this program a little bit, because I think it's critical that we take advantage of this program. And you, as the County Commissioner's leading this county, I think that that's something that you should know about and take advantage of if you don't already know about it. The program is entitled "The Federal Bonding Program." The Federal Bonding Program is a program specifically for ex-offenders. It's a bonding program that is free. The federal government provides this federal bonding program for six months for businesses, let's talk about Lorraine County, businesses here in Lorraine County, if an employer wanted to hire an ex-offender. And believe me, I know the hesitancy of hiring ex-offenders, because when I had my firm, I had, I was hesitant, too. But this is a program that's free. It's been in place for years.
Is it B-U-N-D-I-N-G?
It's the federal bonding, B-O-N-D. It's actually a bonding program. It, the program is set up where employers, a potential, an ex-offender can go to an employer, or somebody can intercede for that ex-offender, and the employer agrees, if the employer agrees to hire this ex-offender, they can, they're covered by this federal bond where the employer is free of any kind of problems. If there's any kind of theft or whatever, this program will cover that situation. So, that's why it's called the Federal Bonding Program. It is actually a bond that the federal government is giving the employer and the employee to say, you know, you, we're going to secure you, and we're going to make sure that you're not taking the risk in hiring this ex-offender. For example, the insurance protects the offender against employee dishonesty. It covers any type of stealing, theft, forgery, larceny, embezzlement, and in fact, a guarantee of a worker's job honesty, an incentive to the employer to hire at-risk applicants, obviously. An employer, you know, ex-offender has a major definition in itself, so therefore, there's got to be some kind of extra incentive for a private employer to look at hiring an ex-offender at this time here in the county. It's a unique tool for marketing applicants to the employers. And I'm not going to go through all of it, because I think that, you know, I can leave something here, but the bond insurance issues range from 5,000 to 25,000 coverage over a six-month period. Now, the reason it's six months is because the federal government feels that if you've been employed for six months and that employer still doesn't, you know, trust you, then you don't deserve the job. Or if they, that employer feels that they need additional time for that insurance, then you pay for the bonding. But the first six months, the bonding is free from the federal government. And I think this is, if there's ever a group of people who need extra, extra assistance, it's ex-offenders, because even what we're talking about, the presentation prior to this, Children in Services, I mean, it fits right in here. If you cannot get a job, what do you think most of the ex-offenders are going to do? They're going to try and do something, whether legal or illegal, to take care of their families. Now, I'm not saying that's the reason everybody does, you know, bad things, but you can imagine, if a person cannot get a job, then what are they going to do? This is an alternative. This is something that can really, really be of great asset, not only to the ex-offender, but to that ex-offender's family, to the county, because then the county is better off, because you got less people going back to prison, you got more people being employed, you got a better tax income coming in also. So, again, that's what I wanted to present to you, and, you know, it's appropriate that it's History Month, but at any month, I think this is a program that should be looked at, it should be publicized, and it should be instituted, however, that we can, so we can help the, not just the African-American and Hispanic ex-offenders, but all ex-offenders here in the county, because those are the people who find it almost impossible to get employed here in the county. So, that's what it is, and I'll leave, I have a copy of the program and its procedures, and I'll make sure that I leave a copy so you guys, and it's very clear on what it is. It's an excellent outline of the program, so I'll leave that with you. I appreciate the time that you've given me this morning to present this program to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any questions?
I sit on the Goodwill Board of Lorraine County, and at their job fairs, they usually have quite a few employers that do hire ex-offenders, so I'm going to pass that information on to them, too, so they can, when they're recruiting employers, that's something that they can give them as a benefit, so, thank you for coming.
And I think that, you know, as Commissioners, this would be a great feather in your cap, since it's a federal program, to look into this and see what kind of official program, you know, could be this. I mean, it, obviously, it's a free program as far as the bonding is concerned, and definitely, we have a lot of ex-offenders here in Lorraine County who would need that assistance in employment, so, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for bringing this.
Pass that on to our Adult probation department back there, too. They might be able to use that also.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for bringing this forward. I know that we talked a lot about this when I was in Columbus. Representative, now State Senator Sandra Williams of Cleveland, was very involved with these initiatives, and it's, you know, it's really critical that we try to find a way for ex-offenders to work their way back into society with gainful employment. Full employment, it's important to turning their lives around, it helps to reduce recidivism. I know the legislature recently was taking action on eliminating checking the box as a way to help facilitate that, and I used to receive letters and phone calls quite often about this issue, and would talk directly with individuals who, you know, were very upset, rightfully so, saying, I'm doing everything I can to turn my life around, I don't want to go back into the system, I want to lead a productive life and, you know, get back with my family and all those things, but I got to, you know, pick up some gainful employment, so. But as my colleague pointed out, we'll certainly make sure that others are aware of this, and I'm sure our workforce development probably knows about the program as well, too. So, yeah, we would certainly encourage employers in this county to look at hiring, you know, ex-offenders, and, you know, forgiveness is something we're taught as kids, and that's something we should be able to demonstrate as adults. Anyone else this morning? Okay. I would move that we move into executive session.
Sure, second.
And now he's slower.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Hi.
Mr. Kayla.
Uh, hold on a second.
We always use the phrases outlined by the prosecutor and administrator.
Okay.
We've kinda given the reasons, so we should add that phrase, Commissioner.
Yeah, so I, I'd make a motion that we move into executive session for the reasons outlined by the county administrator and by legal counsel.
Now, I'll second.
Mr. Lundey.
Hi.
Mr. Kayla.
Hi.
Ms. Council.
Hi.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioner's General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor downtown Elyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioner's page and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.
We load up an 18-foot trailer. Then we have the task of hauling everything out of the trailer and taking it into the gymnasium or lunchroom or whatever large multipurpose room they have for us. We're generally there for the whole day. If we're going to be back at the school the next day, we can leave our equipment still set up. If we're gonna be at a different school the next day, then we have, we have the job of removing it from the, uh, multipurpose room and taking it back to the trailer, loading up the trailer and locking it up and calling it quits for the day. It started in, uh, January 2007, uh, with SERTS, which is Safe Routes to School. And Ken had an idea to develop the, the Safety Star Program. It has escalated to the point where, as of the, to the, this year's date, we have seen 38,000 students in Lorraine County.
County Engineers Office is quite proud to announce that the Safe Routes to School Program has been initiated throughout Lorraine County. We're very excited about this, to help these children from grades K to 4. Teaching them to walk the streets safely is, uh, is very important to us. Uh, we've seen statistics that, quite frankly, shock us. Uh, many times, we read and see stories of pedestrians, uh, being, uh, hit by automobiles in Lorraine County and, and, and it just tears my heart to see these children from K to 4. Part of that. This program is to stop that, to help diminish those type of situations and educate these children on walking and crossing the street safely. And we're quite happy to announce.
We bring safety to the school. We're self-contained, we have all the, uh, the mock simulations of scenarios such as busy intersections, we have all the roads, movie screens, our audio/video system, streets, sidewalks, grass, working traffic signals, working railroad signals, and we bring that all to the school so the student does not have to leave. To make sure that all the lights, bulbs are working. And that all the audio/video equipment is up and running, we then put on the program. We put together a dynamite program with a lot of positivity. We're very animated, the students enjoy it while they're learning an important rule about safety. When we ask questions, we ask for group participation. It's never just one student answering the question, it's everybody answering the question together.
Are you ready? Yeah!
Teachers included. We make learning fun for everybody. We show two, two short films. One is Willie the Whistle. And Willie the Whistle teaches kids in a, in a simple format, the correct way to walk with parents, aunts or uncles or any other family members that are responsible, adults, to cross streets where there are no stop signs or where it's just stop signs and no traffic lights, and to cross streets where there are parked cars, what to look for, when to cross, when there are cars parked along the sides of the street. And again, that's, it's all basically looking left, right and left. When the short film is over, we generally teach from what the kids just watched, and that's, those are the scenarios, then we go over with our, our mock setup. We go over basically what the video has just gone over. And then we let the kids apply what they just learned to doing it in real life, to our, our mock simulation that we have in the room that we are performing in. Everybody leaves at the end of our program with a great feeling, knowing that all they have to do is look left, right and left again, and they're gonna be smiling for a good long time. I would highly recommend this program to all administrative principals at, in, in every school system. And, uh, it's, it's a very good program, I believe in it 100%. I've had students see me at the mall or see me at, uh, a carnival or a festival and come up and say, "I remember you, you're the safety guy, you're Mr. Neal." And the first question I ask them, "What are the three ways you look before you cross the street?" This could be the year after we saw them, and they always say, "Left, right and left again," and they say it with a smile. So I know our program works.
Because you did a good job today, at the end of the day, you're gonna get to go home with the yellow Safety Star bag, okay?
Ah, the fun part. The students, uh, get to take home their surprise at the end of the day, which is the yellow Safety Star bag. And inside that bag are some neat things about pedestrian safety. We have the, uh, pedestrian safety flashcards. They also will get, uh, the Safety Star Certificate of Participation, which has their school name on it and the date. And we like to let the kids know that that's something that they can take home and hang on their refrigerator, they can hang on their bedroom door, or they can have their parents put it in a scrapbook for them. Their parents will receive some information such as the top 10 safety tips for adults, 'cause even as adults, we need to refresh our memories on safety. They, as students, will receive the top 10 Safety Star tips for students. They will also receive a Safety Star, uh, maze for those that are, are a little bit more adventurous and like a challenge. Uh, we also offer a safety coloring sheet. And there are some other things in the bag, but the things the kids like the most is the Safety Star pencil. And that's a pencil that changes colors when you touch it. And with that pencil comes the Safety Star Eraser, which is a, a yellow eraser shaped like a star and it says, "Safety Star" on it.
Yeah!
We need 40-foot by 40-foot area, electrical accessibility and then a, a way to turn off and on the main lights of the room for our movies that we show. The smallest class we've done is 15 students, the largest class is 60. So usually, the, the, the classes range from 23 to 25 students per class. There, there are occasions where the school has to schedule two classes at a time. We're very flexible. Uh, we do have the ability to fit into smaller rooms, so we, we, we pretty much will accommodate to what they can, they can offer. I would highly recommend this program to all principals at, in, in every school system. At the end of the day, I feel very, very good. I'm excited that I know that kids are going to practice what they've learned and I can go home and sleep good at night, knowing that those children are gonna get to school safely, they're gonna get home safely, they're gonna be smiling and their parents are gonna be smiling, because everybody is safe.